Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Lake Clark Shores Virtual Town Council Meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to go over a few items so you know how to participate in today's meeting. All attendees are muted at this time. This is a screenshot of an example of the attendee interface. You should see something like this on your computer. The presentation is displayed on the left side of your screen. The control panel is displayed on the right side of your screen. To open and close the control panel, click on the arrow. Use the control panel to raise your hand, ask questions, and select audio mode. You're listening in using your computer speaker by default. If you prefer to join over the phone, select telephone.
No.
I lost my place, so pardon me for that. Remember to enter your audio pin, otherwise you will not be able to ask questions. There are two ways to submit questions and comments to the town council. You can type them into the question pane of the control panel, or you can ask verbal questions by raising your hand to be unmuted. Comments and questions will be read into the record and answered during the audience comments portion of the meeting. Please remember to write or state your name and address before asking questions or comment. The instructions to participate and submit questions are available to download in the handouts pane of your control panel. Please remember to be respectful, patient, and considerate when asking questions and comments. This meeting is being recorded. The recording will be available on the town's website and the town's YouTube channel within 48 hours after the meeting. The mayor will preside over the meeting. To minimize the occurrence of multiple simultaneous speakers, we've asked that town council members who want to speak should raise their hand to be called on by the mayor. I would like to now introduce Mayor Val Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the very first virtual town hall meeting for Town of Lake Clark Shores, May 12th, 2020, 6:30 PM. We're going to start off with a roll call.
Valentin Rodriguez Jr.
Here.
Paul Xiahou.
President.
Robert Xiahou.
Here.
Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Albert Pavan.
Here.
Thank you. We're going to start off with a moment of silence. I'd like to mention a few people who've passed away since our last town council meeting of March. Anna Maxstrath, 89 years old. She passed away on March 21st of 1400 Beta Court North. Vince Von Vento, he was 74 years old. He's a retired assistant Palm Beach County Administrator and a very hardworking public servant. He passed away March 30th. William Fowler, he was 81 years old. He lived in 1442 Arabian Road East. He passed away April 13th, and he had been a resident of our town for more than 50 years. Margaret Parkinson, she's 68 years old. She lived at 7022 Venetian Way. She passed away April 22nd. She was a longtime volunteer at our town, and she worked at our partner bank, Flagler Bank. And Yvonne English was 91 years old. She passed away on April 29th. She was the mother of the former council member Jim English. We'd also like to have a moment of silence for the 82,485 people who've died in the United States so far from the coronavirus. A lot's happened since our last meeting on March 10th, 2020. We'd like to have a moment of silence for all the people in the world who've passed away, all the people who are sick, and just have a moment of silence that they get better. If we could have our invocation. Or we can wait on that and do a pledge of allegiance.
There we go. Thank you. Just have to wait to be unmuted.
Thank you, Pastor Stan.
Okay. Yes, good to see you, Mayor. Good to see all of you guys, actually. You're looking pretty good. Just take a moment, if we would, a reading from the Psalms. "My soul finds rest in God. My salvation comes from Him. Truly, He is my rock and my salvation. He is my fortress, and I will never be shaken. Heavenly Father, I would pray that you continue to watch over us in these very unique times. Guide our paths and direct our steps as we desire to serve you. In thy precious and holy name we pray, amen." God bless you guys.
Thank you so much. God bless you, Pastor Stan. Could we also do a pledge of allegiance? There's a flag right here, over there, outside, and we're going to pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, council members. We're a part C of our agenda, the first part of Call to Order. We had to reorganize our town council. We do this every year. Normally, we would do it in April, but we did not have an April meeting. So I have to ask for a motion from a council member. And when you make the motion, if you'll just raise your hand so that we know to put your microphone on. I have Mr. Paul Xiahou, who would like to make a motion.
I move that the town council stay the way it is.
Okay, so, and we have a second by Mr. Freebold. That is a motion to, for Val Rodriguez remain mayor, Paul Xiahou to be vice mayor, Robert Xiahou, the president pro tem, and our two other council members to remain as they are. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Mr. Robert Xiahou.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and we'll have comments later. And I accept the nomination, and I'm glad I can do this for another year. We all do this together, obviously. Okay, so we have the approval of our agenda.
So I move.
Thank you. That was Mr. Paul Xiahou, seconded by Robert Xiahou. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Item three on our agenda is consent agenda. I have a motion by Robert Xiahou, was made, seconded by Paul Xiahou. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. So that brings us to our presentations, and we are very fortunate being this is our first virtual town hall meeting, and probably not the last for a while. We do have Representative David Silvers in, as well as Senator Lori Berman. And I believe we're going to start with Representative David Silvers. If you could just give us a moment, we'll bring him up on the screen.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. I don't, I don't think the camera's on, though.
Yeah, we don't have your camera, but we do hear you.
You want me to just present, or wave at the camera, or just, I can just start if you'd like.
Yes, why don't you do that? That would help us. Go ahead and just give your presentation until we can work out the camera issue.
Okay.
Where are you located at right now?
I'm in West Palm Beach.
Okay, thank you.
So, first off, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in today and doing your duty as the council. We are in uncharted, you know, uncharted waters here. So I appreciate you coming in and having myself and Senator Berman in today for a presentation. And I'm happy to talk about this past legislative session. But I do want to just make one mention that this is a very interesting time, if you want to call it. And I've been hosting several Zoom town halls with the Fordham Mental Health Institute. And I hope that all that are listening realize that it, at the end of the day, if you're going through some things, if it's an unemployment issue, or if it's a healthcare issue, we're here for you, and there's help out there. You know, whether it's two-on-one, or us as the state representative, or the state senator's office, or your local city council. So I'll get into legislation that I was able to pass this past session. I was able to focus, and in the last few years, I've been focusing on, nice segue there, I guess. I've been focusing on mental health. Last four years I've been in legislature, and this past year is not any different. I was able to pass my fourth piece of mental health legislation called Children's Mental Health. And it's a House Bill 945. It seeks to limit the use of crisis inpatient services by children and enhance the effectiveness of our current community services for children. It focuses on three areas: mobile response teams, the coordination of children's system of care, and crisis stabilization services. The bill addresses, HB 945, addresses some recommendations from DCF and the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Commission. It encourages the use of mobile response team services by ensuring parents and guardians of children receiving behavioral health services have contact information from mobile response teams. Now, I'm not sure if you remember the details of the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas bill that we passed in 2018, but we created these mobile response teams that are basically statewide to go to different schools to de-escalate situations so there's less likelihood for a child to be baker-acted. The data that we've all been quite aware of, felt rather recently after Marjorie Stoneman Douglas, is that there are quite a few people, children, that are being baker-acted through the school system. And the goal is to get the help to these children. Yes, if they need to be baker-acted, okay. But if there's a situation where we can de-escalate the situation at school and not, being baker-acted is such a traumatic experience. You know, we want to basically go through any type of mitigation possible to, to, I guess, fix the situation, if that makes sense. And this bill helps create some level of standard for the mobile response teams and a level of accountability. They have to provide every year to the governor and to the legislature a report on the calls they have and how many calls that they're able to de-escalate. And the bill also addresses the use of crisis stabilization services by requiring DCF and the Agency for Healthcare Administration to jointly address children who are high utilizers of these services. So, for example, if you have a child that's been baker-acted two, three, four times, and scary enough as it is, if you go to the Baker Act Reporting Center in Tampa, University of South Florida, at the Florida Mental Health Institute, you'd be shocked how many children have been repeat Baker Act admissions. So this would hopefully create a level of coordination of care between DCF and ACHA that we've never seen before. And had to have Chad Popple, the new secretary at DCF, and Secretary Mayhew at ACHA in my office describing to me how they want to work together. They haven't had this level of coordination before. Hopefully, it'll bring a higher level of care for those children that are in need of mental health help. And then, going on from mental health, I was able to pass HB 1459, which speaks to affordable housing. And it basically, it relieves a little bit of red tape with getting, I guess, being recognized as affordable housing. And the term, the support of housing, would meet the definition for affordable housing when certain criteria are met. And then, I was able to pass House Bill 241 that speaks to domestic violence injunctions. The bill authorizes a court issuing a domestic violence injunction to award the petitioner the exclusive care, possession, and control, or control of an animal that the petitioner, the respondent, or a minor child residing in the home of either party owns, possesses, harbors, keeps, or holds, except an animal owned primarily for a bona fide agricultural purpose or service animal. If it responded, it is a service animal's handler. Basically, you're, you have a lot of situations where, and I'm sure family law attorneys can, I guess, explain a little bit more than myself. But I'm hearing more, I heard more and more stories while this bill was going through the legislature and while I was sponsoring it. There are a lot of people that were staying abusive relationships out of fear of harming a family pet. And this will hopefully, you know, prevent that from happening and let people get out of a relationship that could be abusive and not out of fear of their family pet, which is a member of the family in a lot of respects. And then, another, my last bill I was able to pass is HB 813, Protection of Vulnerable Investors Requires Security Dealers, Securities Dealers, Investment Advisors, and Associated Persons to Report Knowledge of or Suspicion of Abuse, Neglect, or Exploitation of Vulnerable Adults to DCF, Authorizes Dealers and Investment Advisors to Delay Certain Disbursements or Transactions Based on a Reasonable Belief of Financial Exploitation of a Specified Adult. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear. And it requires that a dealer or investment advisor to notify certain persons and OFR of such delays within specified timeframe. There are people that are being, being taken advantage of in our state. And this is to basically allow people to sound the alarm and to prevent somebody from being taken for their life savings. And, and also, I was able to get a few appropriations in the budget. One specifically for Lake Clark Shores for the Septage Sewer Project for $236,000. And another one for Green Acres, and another one for the Mental Health First Aid Project as well here in Palm Beach County. Now, we, I'm sure we were all aware that we're going to have some significant, significant budgetary shortfalls. But I'm going to be fighting to keep those projects in the budget. And it just depends on when we go back up for a special session. I don't know if we're going to have a special session before June 30th. Our fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th. So let's hope for the best, and I'm here for any questions.
I appreciate that, Representative Silvers. If any council member would like to ask some questions or make comments, just raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. Let's see. Paul Xiahou, what would you like to say?
Representative Silvers, thank you very much for everything that you've done for us.
Oh, I think I'm on.
You're on now. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your presentation and coming on and giving us the update. Really appreciate all your hard work that you continue to do year after year for our town, including the appropriations requests, fighting for the things that we need here in our town. I love everything that you continue to do with the bills that you've been passing. I know you and I have spoken before many times about that. So just thank you, and keep doing what you're doing. You're doing amazing.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We, council member, President Pro Tem, Robert Xiahou.
David.
Hey.
I tell you what, your passion and compassion for Lake Clark Shores and your other constituents is unparalleled.
I appreciate that.
Very much for your hard work. We were up there last session, and it was self-evident what you tried to do, what you tried to accomplish. And we thank you very much. We're not going to forget it.
Thank you. It's an honor. I'm happy to do it. And it's some late nights there in the Capitol trying to get the appropriations in the budget, but it's got to be done. And to be honest with you, I actually like it. It's a lot of fun.
Councilmember Greg Freebold, did you have a comment?
Representative Silvers, thank you so much for everything you've done for us. You know, we've been in your office many times. We greatly appreciate your help. I'm hoping those budgetary shortfalls don't affect small municipalities as they've already taken a hit. But we do greatly appreciate your work. So thank you, and stay well, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you, Representative Silvers. You know, sometimes as lawyers, we read these laws, and we never really think about the hard work that goes in to creating the laws. And we really appreciate the fact that, you know, you listen to your constituents and stakeholders, and you have ideas, and then you bring them to light, and then they become law. And these, these laws that you just discussed, particularly domestic abuse and Baker Act and children's rights laws are really helpful. We really appreciate that. I'm glad you have a heart.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any other questions for Representative Silvers? I see no hands. Okay, well, thank you, Representative Silvers. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy day.
Thank you. Can I make one last, a last announcement?
Please.
Okay, sorry. I, I think I mentioned it before. I'm going to be hosting this Thursday a mental health town hall with the lead counselor, the mental health counselor at Palm Beach State College, Robin Russo, and Sharon Lahurru, the president and CEO of 211 here in Palm Beach County, as well as Kathleen Moore, the executive director for the Florida Mental Health Institute based at the University of South Florida in Tampa. And we're going to go over some issues that have been, have been coming up a lot with college students. And, you know, there's a lot of issues when it comes to not being able to see your friends, or finish classes, or graduate, and not be able to walk. There are a lot of kids that are, you and I have been able to experience that unfortunately, a lot of high school and college students are missing out on those special times. So if there's someone that's watching, and they have a child that's in high school or in college that is, has a feeling of loss, please, please log in and check it out. You can go to my, like, my representative, Rep. David Silvers on Facebook to get that information.
I appreciate that. We'll definitely make sure people go and look at that. Any other questions? Thank you again. I appreciate it, and you have a good evening.
You too.
For your public service.
Thank you. Sorry about the camera before.
That's okay.
Be safe, David.
You too.
Our next presentation is a legislative update by our Senator, Senator Lori Berman, District 31. And I'm going to try to get her online for us here. There you are. Need to unmute.
Can you hear me? No?
Yes. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Great. Congratulations, Mayor, on your reelection and vice mayor. It's really wonderful to be here with all of you this evening. As you know, it's a crazy time for all of us, and I'll go into that a little bit. But I want to sort of start on the legislative side and then talk a little bit about what's going on with COVID. So on the legislative side, we finished session on March 14th, right as everything was happening. We had a really great budget, including the item for Lake Clark Shores that I worked on with Representative Silver, which we were really happy to see included again this year in the budget. We did teacher salary increases of $400 million. We did $100 million for Florida Forever Land Buy, $370 million, which is the full amount for the Sadowski Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So hallelujah, we're finally fully funding affordable housing. And we did $300 million in reserves for coronavirus, which was obviously not enough at the time. It was a start. We had a $93 billion budget. So we don't know what will happen now. Everybody knows that all those budget projections have to be off. All our sales taxes are off. All our tourism is off. There is discussion about the governor vetoing some items. I'll be very sad because, like I said, it was, it was, in my 10 years in the legislature, this is by far the absolute best budget that I've ever had the pleasure to vote for. And the items that we got, Palm Beach County has, I have two pages, two plus pages of items that would help Palm Beach County. And it will be very upsetting if a lot of these items are vetoed. So we will see how it works out. You know, obviously, things have changed dramatically. One really great thing about this past session was we, because you have such a strong League of Cities and League of Counties, there was very little action done in terms of preemption. I know I always report to you on what happened in the preemption front so that you know what bills you can't pass. The biggest one that happened had to do with the sunscreen because Key West had actually said you can't sell some sunscreens with certain chemicals. That was overruled the Key West law. So you can't sell those sunscreens with, you can't say, you as a legislator can't say we're going to limit sunscreen sales in our area. And that was, that was the biggest preemption bill. There was also some growth management. And so you're going to, if you don't change your comp plan before 2023, you're going to have to go in and change a few little things in your comp plan. And there was some discussion about towing. And so there's a few minor things with regard to towing vehicles that was done on the, on the preemption side. So let's talk a little bit about the world right now with coronavirus. It's just, aside from the actual health concerns, the Florida unemployment system has failed us miserably. I'm sure you've heard from people, our offices are inundated with people who filed unemployment claims, who can't get any insurance, who don't have food. We've had tremendous crisis because of the unemployment situation. The state at Palm Beach County is reopening, as you know. But that doesn't, you know, there are still people in dire circumstances. So our offices, I'm sure Rep. Silver is in mind, we are almost working full-time helping constituents on those issues. And, you know, he talked about mental health. We have people call our offices crying. They're either crying, they're angry, and rightfully so. The unemployment system, there have been 1.3 million claims, valid individual claims in the state of Florida. We have a little over 10 million people who are employed in Florida. So we've got a pretty high unemployment rate. And of that 1.3 million, not even half have yet received their first payment. So we are going to continue to work on that. Anything we can do to help you, you know, we, everything is such a crisis now. It's, it's not just the health problems, the unemployment, domestic violence, food insecurities, people not being able, worried about paying their rent and their utilities. So we are out there doing everything we can, anything we can do to help you. We are happy to do that and know that my office is always, you know, we love working with you guys. We're happy to be, do anything and proud to represent the city of Lake Clark Shore. So anything I can do for you guys, I really, let's keep working together because we're going to need to. Thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Any council members would like to have comments or ask questions? Greg Freebold.
Senator, good evening. How are you today?
Good, thank you.
Good. I know there's a lot of what-ifs out there going on. One of my major questions, of course, is on the unemployment for all the employers who have paid into it. Is there a timeline or any relief in sight for the folks that are being affected by that?
We've been screaming as loud as we can. The governor has not given us a timeline. Some of you may know the new head, Jonathan Satter. He's from Palm Beach County. I mean, he's had a huge job to step into. He's been there now about three weeks. I don't think he's even prepared to give a timeline at this point, which is very unfortunate.
Okay, well, thank you for, thank you for all of your effort. And I'll open the floor to any of the other council.
I'm Bob Xiahou.
Senator, it's so nice to know that we have a friend in the Senate, along with our other representatives from Palm Beach County. You gave a nice shout out to the Florida League of Cities, and you gave a very good shout out to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. Everybody works together, and we work together because of strong leadership like yourself and Representative Silver. So we were up there with you in, in January, and it's, it's a pleasure to work with you. You're there for us, and we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor Paul Xiahou.
I don't have any questions, Senator. I just want to thank you again for all your hard work in getting appropriations. Every year you back us in what we need, and it's very much appreciated. Sorry I missed you during session this year. I couldn't make it up because of my son was born, but I'll be up there next time.
That's a good excuse.
Yeah, it was a real good excuse.
Yeah, and I am doing a town hall with Congresswoman Frankel tomorrow night. So if any of you guys want to tune in, just to Congressman Frankel's website, and we're happy. We're talking about all the COVID issues.
I have a quick question, Senator Berman. I noticed on your website and your handout, you're encouraging people to contact you if they have unemployment. encouraging people to contact you if they have unemployment issues. I don't want to like send too many people your way. What are you able to help them with?
So we do have something, they call it a smart sheet. I don't know why they use that terminology, but it's for legislators to actually put it in the person's information into Tallahassee. And I have to believe and I hope in my heart that we are getting some priority once we submit that smart sheet so that at least somebody in Tallahassee is looking at the claim. I mean, people are stay are on the line for hours trying to find someone to talk to. And then if you read, there was an article in the paper yesterday, and we've been hearing it from people. When they finally get through to the call center, the people don't even know, don't know what they're doing and don't have answers for them. But at least maybe if we're submitting that smart sheet on your behalf, I hope that it means that at least somebody in Tallahassee is actually looking at your claim and maybe giving it a little bit of an expedited treatment because it is coming through your legislator's office. So we're happy. You're you're welcome to refer people to our office, and maybe maybe we're getting them a little bit of an expedited treat.
Well, thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I see no hands. Well, thank you again, Senator Lori Berman. I appreciate taking the time out. We appreciate your hard work, your public service, particularly now as a public servant, you are more important to the people in the state of Florida in this county than you can ever imagine.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to, we have no quasi judicial proceedings nor a public hearing, so we'll go on to our unfinished business. We have the second and final reading of ordinance 2020 dash oh one regarding definition of restaurant, et cetera. Maybe have the Madam Clark read second reading.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending Chapter 125 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Article One in general, Section 125 dash one definitions, to amend the definition of restaurant, amending Section 125 dash four decisions by zoning board of adjustment function of Town Council to specify the zoning board of adjustment is an advisory board to the Town Council, amending Article four, Article six, excuse me, Districts Division Three, multifamily residential district, Section 125.330, maximum lot coverage of all buildings to change the deciding authority to Town Council for special exceptions, amending Division Four Limited Commercial District, Section 125 dash 360, permitted principal uses and structures to revise permitted uses for restaurants, amending Section 125 dash 363, prohibited uses and structures by amending subsection two E regarding alcoholic beverages, amending Section 125 366, maximum lot coverage by all buildings to correct describer's error by adding maximum lot coverage, amending Section 125 dash 369, minimum off-street loading and parking requirements to revise parking requirements for restaurant, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, severability clause, an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Motion was, there was a motion made by President Pro Tem Robert Shahou, and seconded by Vice Mayor Paul Shahou. All those in favor? Okay, we actually, did we vote?
I believe we did.
Did vote, but we'll go ahead and take the question anyway. Would you like to read that question?
I will. This question is coming from Logan Steele. The question is, this ordinance goes beyond just approving a change for Jill Bistro. This ordinance gives the board complete control over any decision? Why is the board approving something that gives itself such control?
Okay, just clarification, Dave, were you able to hear what he said on your earphone, through your phones? I could not, but I don't.
Would you like me to read the question?
No, I was able to hear you. I just couldn't hear you through the earphone. So I don't know why. Yeah. Okay, so there, that's better. Do we have, anyone want to answer that question?
I think maybe Charlie.
If I might.
Thank you.
I believe the gentleman is inquiring about the zoning board of adjustment being an advisory board to the Town Council and the Town Council making the final decision. That ordinance was changed last year or the year before, and this is a section that is inconsistent with the current code. So this change is really not anything new. It is simply a correction of a section of the code that did not get changed when the Board of Adjustment became an advisory board.
Okay.
Also, I think that actually the change was back in 2016. Because before I ran, sorry, before I got elected, the council at the time presided over zoning board issues as a, at least that's what I recall, as an advisory board, maybe I'm mistaken, but that's what I recall.
And that ordinance has been in place for some time.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I think that helps us with the question. We appreciate the questions. We're gonna have time for audience comments. Yes, now. So the ordinance did pass in second reading. We have no new business. We have audience comments, and I understand we have quite a few persons viewing tonight, which is really good, and we encourage it. We will have to limit speakers to three minutes for questions. And what we'll do is if somebody here, one of the council members, Vice Mayor President Pro Tem, want to answer a question, just raise your hand, and we'll put the microphone over to you. So we'll invite our first attendee to the first Town of Lake Clark Shore's virtual Town Council meeting. You can be the first person to ask a question virtually.
So please, if you're an attendee, hit the little hand symbol, and that will be raising your hand. It will know that you'd like to speak.
I can't explain it. We are very soft spoken. Hard to hear you. Hear everybody as loud as possible. You're very soft.
I couldn't hear my mic. I couldn't hear you.
Excuse me, Dan, you are self muted.
I got it.
Okay, so what was it?
So we have one hand raised and Mr. Chip Damsel. So we'll turn his microphone on now.
Mr. Damsel? Hi there. I wasn't expecting to come this early in the program.
That's okay. If you can just tell us your full name and address.
My name is Chip Damsel. I live at 8147 Pine Tree Lane. And my question is, would it be possible for the Lake Clark Shores boat we see at Christmas time to be out in the lake to help mitigate what has become a real problem with the jet skiers that seem to go for hours every Saturday and Sunday afternoon? It's like having a B-52 in the backyard. Also, would it be possible for that boat, same boat, to make a run through the lake in the evenings, especially on the weekends after 10:00, when we seem to frequently have kids playing loud music in boats just off the edge of our backyard line, so loud that it rattles the glass in the coffee table in the front of the house away from the lake? And I also have a question. Are we liable if one of those jet skiers, and they really do fly around that place at top speed like they're at Daytona, if one of them hits our dock and is injured, are we subject to slip and fall suits for that sort of thing? That's my question for the moment.
Okay, so why don't we start with the third question first and ask Charlie to answer that?
The question you asked was regarding liability if someone hits your dock. As you may generally not be liable because the dock is there, it's a known item, and the fact that someone hits it is not necessarily your responsibility. However, that does not prevent you from being sued by an individual who thinks that you may be responsible. Right, thank you.
At the end of the day, they gotta prove negligence.
That's correct. They have to prove negligence, or they have to prove that there was an unsafe condition. And the fact that dock exists isn't in and of itself not unsafe.
Is there any limitation on how fast these people can drive around that lake on these vehicles? Because they really do seem to be trying to go for land water speed records out there. And it's frightening. It's frightening.
We do, we do have a code that covers how close they're allowed to get to the seawall. I don't remember if it's 50 feet or what it is, but we've debated this issue before. And what I would suggest, Mr. Damsel, is our police chief will sit and talk to you about his effort to use our police boat for the weekends to patrol. I've been out there personally, we've seen a lot of jet skis going very fast. We had a lot of activity this week, particularly when they opened the dock. Wes, would you like to add anything to that?
Sure, thank you. Last month, we issued about 15 stops. We were able to issue 13 warnings, and we did one courtesy tow for somebody who broke down. We have issued citations in the past. There's no speed limit on the lake because you have boats that pull skiers. I know we've had issues with jet skis. At one time, they were popular, and then they weren't popular, and now they're getting very popular, and we're having issues. We can look at careless operation and reckless operation. And I, we do have the boat out on Saturday. Scheduling, I don't have the personnel to have the boat out unless there's an emergency. We've been very busy with patrolling on the on the roads and highways and responding to calls in the residential area. But we do get the boat out on Saturday, and we try to get it out on Sunday, unless we have issues with employees being out sick or on vacation.
But Chief, we are putting someone out there once a week on a minimum, right?
Right, we are. We are.
Can I ask, Chief, do you all ever get out there at night when these kids are playing the boom boxes so loud that they, you know, you can hear it in the, you can hear it in your front yard?
Yeah, we, I wasn't aware of that. I haven't had any complaints. We can work on that. We do have an ordinance, and we do have a sound meter. We can address that problem.
All right, I really appreciate it.
Okay, I would like, when you have an opportunity, give me a call, or I can come by and visit with you, and we can talk about.
I will call you so we can practice social distancing.
Okay, I appreciate it. I was not aware of that. You're the first person that has complained about that. So we'll address the problem. Also, I'd like to talk to you about it, give you some more information, and maybe and get, try to get some descriptions of the boats or the people if they're close to your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another person?
We have Victoria Prinzy.
Ms. Prinzy, can you hear us?
She is self muted.
I think I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
That's, we can't hear you. Say your name and address, please. I think you muted yourself again.
It says it's unmuted, so can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to thank you guys for presenting this webinar so that we can participate. And, oh, wait, I didn't say who I was. Victoria Prinzy at 1411 Coranda Circle here in Lake Clark Shores. And as always, I tell you, I love living here, and I just wanted to say it again. But I just wanted to thank you for having the, having this webinar. I want to come to the meetings every month, but I work up in the gardens until 6 o'clock. So, and I'm an accountant, so 6 o'clock means 7, 8, or 9. And I never can make the meetings, but if it's a webinar like this, even when we're not under coronavirus lockdowns, this would be super. I could watch it at work or in my car on the way home or whatever. So I just wanted to put in a bid that if it's not too costly or too much of a hassle, if this electronic meeting could happen going forward regardless of the virus.
Well, we appreciate the question, and that's definitely something we're gonna look into. We do suspect that we won't be able to do that quite some time because we suspect that the pandemic is not gonna end anytime soon. But the idea for long term is something that we will certainly think about, being that we now have the technology for it, which is, which is great. But thank you so much. How do you spell your last name, ma'am?
P as in Peter, R, Robert, I, India, N, Nancy, Z, zebra, I, Prinzy.
Prinzy, okay, thank you. Thank you for taking a timeout.
Love it. Thank you.
Thanks. Do we have another speaker?
We have a couple of others.
Okay.
Mr. Robert Gonzalez. Wrong one. Seems like he's self muted.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Well, I just wanted to echo what the previous speaker, by the way, Robert Gonzalez, 1420 South Lake Court. I just wanted to echo what an incredible job you guys are doing for for our town and more importantly, our community. I also wanted to to bring a little notoriety to the residents of Lake Clark Shores Facebook group. I know it's not an official group, but I think it was Albert and Mr. Rodriguez was, they were nice enough to provide some updates on our community at the, at the beginning of this whole COVID outbreak. So thank you so much for for being really engaged and involved with with day to day. Mr. Rodriguez, I know I see you around the town jogging and walking every once in a while. But I've just been really impressed with our residents, our neighbors, in in the spirit of keeping everybody happy and healthy during this time. I know during Easter, a lot of people were doing different things. There was a bear hunt that that happened in our neighborhood. There's a couple of neighborhood neighbors that are putting up Christmas lights to to put a smile on everybody's face. And we've had some of the ice cream trucks or whatnot go by, and I've just been, I actually, on one of my walks, I passed by a resident, a neighbor that had free sanitized books, so a play off of the little libraries that that Lake Worth has. But it was really, really nice to see this immense amount of community spirit. And I'm beyond honored and privileged to to call myself a resident. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. And thank you for your service to the town and willing to help us out.
Absolutely. Take care.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori DeJesus.
Good evening, Mr. DeJesus. Please unmute your microphone.
There we go.
Can you hear me?
You can now. Thank you. Can you say your name and address, please?
Sure. Lori DeJesus, 7611 Pine Tree Drive, Wayne, Pine Tree Lane. Sorry. Earlier, you mentioned that there was funding on sewers, and there's been some chatter with some residents about sewers. I was wondering if you could shed some light on what is going on with the sewers?
Yeah, I'm gonna allow our town manager to just bring you up to date briefly on that issue.
So in the last six months, nothing has really changed. Council decided that we would move forward with a sewer design project. We got money from the state last year, $300,000. We're in line to get another $236,000 this year. Surveyors are out right now collecting data throughout the town. The design will take close to 18 months more to complete. No decision has been made beyond the design. No decision has been made beyond the design completion. The design consultants were selected tonight, approved by council tonight, selected through a CCNA process. And that's where we are on sewers.
Can you explain what a CCNA process is?
To select a, an engineer, an architect, you have to go through a consultant's competitive selection process. That's a state mandate.
Thank you, Mr. DeJesus. Does that satisfy your question?
Um, yes. I have one more question. So this money that you're getting for the sewers, are you just putting this aside and will that be, like, do we have any idea how much the sewers are going to cost? Is this going to be money out of the residents or will this money cover the residents?
Mr. Clark will explain that with that money to you.
The, the design process is intended to get enough detailed information so we can figure out what the cost of sewers will be. Right now, the money that's being collected is simply paying for the design.
We have no idea what the cost would be to anyone, to town residents or anything. We're nowhere near that stage yet, ma'am.
Okay.
The first part, the first three hundred for the survey.
Okay, thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker? Excuse me, a audience member?
Yes, we do. Imad Aho. Did I mess that up appropriately? He is self muted.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, so this is Vani Au. We're at 8081 West Lake Drive.
Thank you. Could you spell your last name, please?
Sure. It's A-Y-O-U-B-S-N, Boy.
Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Yeah, so we have a lot of cars that speed down the road and we have a lot of little kids that live, well, in our home, but also next door to us and around us. We were wondering what is it to get speed bumps on our street? Like Pine Bridge has, not Pine Ridge, whatever it's called.
Pine Tree.
Pine Tree.
Those were put in many years ago. And I don't believe there's a plan to put in any of those bumps in our town because they do create some issues. But I'd like to have our police chief just pipe in here for a second. To try to slow down speakers in that area.
Okay, good. Thank you for that question. What I'd like you to do is if you get an opportunity to, if there are any specific days or evenings in the time period, and let me know and make sure they will have an officer in that area to do some radar and laser surveys in that area. And is, is this in the evening around dinnertime or before or you're talking about like all day?
It's all the time. It's like a racetrack. Like we have FedEx trucks going 40 miles an hour. Like it's just crazy.
All right, well, we'll take care of it. I will tell you, most of the time my complaint is that we write too many tickets. I'll be more than happy. We'll check out the seats and we'll see if we can accommodate and take some action in your area. And I appreciate.
And it's usually, oh, sorry. And it's usually between the Edgewater stop sign and the, I think it's Arabian Road where that's that long stretch where there's no stop sign. It's usually right there.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate you piping in and giving us that information. That's helpful. We also may have, do we still have our radar?
Yes. Last, last month, we, we issued about 30 tickets around that area, citations.
Okay, that's helpful to know. Maybe we can put our speed radar. Encourage people to slow down. But we appreciate that and we could put a speed trailer in that location. Okay.
We can probably use my radar.
Right. Vice Mayor Paul Schaffner?
Thank you for bringing this up to our attention. But one of the things that the mayor mentioned, speed bumps create other complications such as emergency vehicle getting to the people that they need to in a family fashion. The average walk time is a little over seven minutes here. And that's partially due to the location of where the park or station is. But one of the issues is also the speed bumps and they got to be able to maneuver. And so just keep that in mind. It's not always. There's a lot of other things going on behind why there are not speed bumps. Or more speed bumps.
Thank you so much. And we want to encourage you to come back with any other questions you ever have. Do we have another speaker?
Yes, we do. Mr. Tim Daughtry.
Your microphone's off.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, is that Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Could you say your full name and address?
Timothy Daughtry, 1410 Keller Row.
Thank you, Mr. Daughtry. Go ahead, please.
So I really love all the people I'm seeing on the streets, walking, riding bikes and everything else. It's really, really, really encouraging to see it. And it's an opportunity to us engage all of our neighbors because so many of us are so busy all the time. It's, it's difficult to talk to people all the time. But the thing I want to encourage is maybe we can do a reverse 911 to reinforce with people the rules of the road when you're walking or running or when you're riding, riding a bike. Such as you need to be walking into traffic or running into traffic and when you're riding your bike, you should be riding with traffic and then obey the stop signs and things like that. So we don't have anybody hurt. And then I would like to encourage us, maybe if we can afford it, to have reflector vests for people because we have a lot more people on the roads these days. And I would love not have someone be hurt during this time. Taking advantage of the roads we have out there and everything else, even though, you know, I love seeing them all the time. I just don't want anybody to be hurt. So that's my encouragement.
Thank you so much, Mr. Daughtry. We can pass that suggestion on or at least speak about it and see if we can come up with some ideas. You're absolutely right, though. There is major amount of people walking and jogging and riding bikes and it's very encouraging. What we also want to hope is that people slow down when they see those people. Because we really are a town of pedestrians, I think. And we want to encourage that because we don't have sidewalks. But I will share your information with Wes and I would invite you to come speak to the police chief anytime you want.
Thank you very much. And you're all doing a great job and it's appreciated.
Thank you so much. Do we have another audience participant?
We don't have any hands up right now, but I do have some written questions.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and do those now?
So we ask that our attendees send us questions before the meeting and we have three attendees that did that. Pollock Kvarnberg on 7328 Pine Tree Lane asked about sewers, which I've already responded to. She also asked about power lines being buried. There are no plans being made to have or have been approved to bury the power lines. FPL informed us they are doing a hardening project, which means they are replacing key wooden poles with concrete poles. There will be though, because Mrs. Kvarnberg lives close to the bridge, during the construction of the bridge, there will be some changes made to the power lines at that time. She also asked about the lift. So my response was Blue Way Trail Inc. is a not-for-profit organization that is working to get a Blue Way Trail designation from the Florida State DEP. They are the only ones working on that effort at this time. And the last part of her question was sidewalks. She wanted to know about sidewalks and I said, we have no plans or discussions that are occurring about sidewalks.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you. I appreciate you answering those questions.
We, we have.
I want to remind.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have a couple more?
Sure, I just, I just want to do one thing before we forget to get other questions. We had an interesting question here. This is our first town council virtual meeting. We want to assure you that we are nowhere near each other. We are in our council chambers, but we're separated by at least, it looks like 12 feet apart. And we are wearing masks in the building. And we felt it was important to have this council meeting as close as we could be, but as far as we could be. If you look at Albert Pavone, our council member, he is in his office, which is located in Lake Clark Shores. And then we're spread out here. We just wanted to remind viewers that we are practicing social distancing and we want to encourage you to do the same. It will be sometime before all our council will be able to ever be together in the same room in close proximity like we are during a regular meeting. With that being said, we just wanted you to understand that because we know you can't see the bigger picture from where you are. I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, could you go with the next question?
So the next question comes from Kathy Antica. I apologize for that pronunciation. 7741 Pine Tree Lane. She wants to know about sewers and sidewalks. Saying that they would be a great community item. Do we have a status update on that? So I think I just provided that in answering the other question. This comes from Ena Schmidt, 1811 Antigua Road in Lake Clark Shores. Please provide an update or discussion of the use of 6900 West Lake Drive.
Thank you so much. That's a very good question. And Dan, if you don't mind giving an update on where that property is now, that was a topic, a hot topic on our March 10th council meeting. And obviously lots happened since March 10th, but I know there's a lot of grass there and it's nice and green.
So following direction from council, we have reached out to some folks to find out if we can get a valuation on that property, both as a single-family residential parcel and as a office, commercial, professional office space parcel. So that council could make an informed decision about what we're giving up if we decide to leave it as a park or what value we might expect if we decide to sell it as a single-family parcel or sell it as a rezoned professional office parcel.
Well, thank you so much. I think that's exactly our direction to you at the last meeting. And there was a lot of, a lot of people who chimed in and had a lot of opinions. We're not taking any action, obviously, until we know the consequences of our action. I think we all agree to that, right? Okay, great.
Those are all the questions we have, Mayor, and I see no more hands up.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have no more audience comments. Last chance before we move on to our status reports. And just to remind you, you can always email us questions at any time, go to the website, contact Mr. Clark. We're always here to answer these questions. There was a mailer that went out about a week and a half ago that addressed a lot of these issues and told you to contact us. And it had every single council member's email address. And we want to encourage you to email us. We do respond. Status reports. I'll start with our legal counsel, if you don't mind.
My legal report is included. Let me just click this. My legal report is included in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Scheck regarding the legal report? Charlie, we're going to really need you the next couple of months because all sorts of issues are coming up with this virus and how to deal with it. And we appreciate your, your help. In the last month and a half, what we had to do and, and how we have to deal with this issue and helping us with our emergency orders and helping us figure out state law to even be able to have this meeting virtually like we did. So thank you, Charlie, and I'm glad you're, you're available.
And I have cleared my calendar for the next several months, so I will be here and be available.
You won't be traveling, will you?
No.
Vice Mayor Schaffner has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Charlie?
Yes.
What was the decision on the code board that holding these meetings would not be appropriate?
The, the, there was general discussion amongst city and county attorneys throughout the state on this issue. We have a web link for a discussion of these types of issues. And it was determined by the consensus of the attorneys representing municipalities throughout the state that because it's a quasi judicial proceeding, which requires due process in that anyone who speaks has the right to be cross-examined, that that would be very difficult to do with a virtual meeting. The city attorneys are looking into the issue to determine if there's a way to make it work. But the initial decision was that it would be best to avoid virtual meetings for any quasi judicial proceedings.
So we're falling in line with the municipalities?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Schecklin's legal report? We'll move to our police chief for the police report.
Hey, I'm unmuted. You all have a copy of my report. If there's any questions, feel free. It's been submitted.
Any questions, Chief Smith? I, I just want to commend you, Chief Smith. I know you've been working from home due to age. And, and I know we had a couple of officers in that situation. But I, we appreciate you driving around town, keeping the police department together and finding a lot of reserve officers to help us. I think, I think right now you're having, there's probably never a greater need for the police than there is now, particularly community policing, because so many people are home.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so our other status report coming from our town manager? Mr. Clark, you ready?
I'm happy to answer questions. My monthly report has been submitted.
Any, any questions?
Any updates on the grant, ready?
No, it's just that it seems we have lots of opportunity here and we're trying to get focused on what's.
I saw that. I think it's phenomenal. Hopefully we'll be able to get some money if we can get that, once we get that going.
We've reached out to the county for assistance on the CDBG grants. They seem to be willing to help us move them forward. So it's all positive.
Thank you. And thank you very much for all your hard work the last couple of months, keeping everything flowing and moving. I know it's an arduous task for you and stuff. Thank you for getting us to this point where we can have our meetings.
Thank you, but we have an awesome staff.
Right. Any other questions, Mr. Clark? Having seen them, we are now ready for council comments. And I'd like to start with Mr. Pavone, who is far away, just down the street.
I'm far, but I'm close.
And you've been quiet tonight, so we'd like to hear what you have to say.
I'm, I'm just listening to all the positive news that, that I'm hearing. I have to say, Dan has been putting, going through the trenches on making this video work. We, we've all been attending different ways as a panelist or attendees and I'm real glad that it actually turned out this way. Kind of to echo Paul and some of the things you were saying about, you know, I follow a lot of the social media stuff and I see a lot of comments about the town. And I think everybody here on the, well, not no longer the dais, but we're all open to have phone calls, emails, any questions. We're all open to have phone calls, emails, any questions. So we kind of don't start rumors, kind of see people get heated about it. I always say, if you have a question, you know, just give us a call. I'm sure we'll all do our best to answer or go find the answers. So I love this town. And I want to keep seeing and move forward. So that's all I have to say.
Awesome. Are new people moving in or how's the housing market?
We, we've been busy and Lake Clark is very low in inventory. So. Yeah, so, but the market has still remained pretty hot in Lake Clark, I have to say.
Well, can you imagine any other place to be during a pandemic?
No, no, I, when I think about somebody trapped in like a condo or something. You know, it's got to be tough here. I'm watching people on the boats and jet skis and just sitting out back. Finally enjoying like your own backyard. I mean, that's, that's, it's, that's definitely a haven.
And we hear all the birds all of a sudden and we see things that were always there, but we never saw before. We take walks. It's really a unique place to live.
The weather's been phenomenal, like. This time of year.
We're responsible for that.
Yeah, we, you can, you can thank us. Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Pavone. Thank you for being on the council and working hard. I'll go over to Mr. Freebold. What comments do you have?
Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to pass around all the thank yous here too, because the staff here in the town hall has been working very hard. Under strenuous conditions, Mr. Clark, the chief, his staff. I want to pass one thing along to everybody who's listening, and it has to do with the boat ramp because I get a lot of calls about the boat ramp. So if everyone out there listening. Can just pass the word to be courteous, respectful and patient. Everybody is on edge, it seems these days. And if anyone has been down there to the boat ramp when there's a very busy time. It gets a little hectic. So everybody, please adhere to the guidelines. Be patient, be calm. There will be a turn for everybody. And I think that there is a boating etiquette out there and Mr. Damsel. Will work on those jet skiers. I sent Mr. Clark when they opened up the boat ramps in all capital letters, the jet skis are back. And he sent a big smiley face with a frown face also. So it's a mixed emotion out there. If you have them, they're great. If you don't, they're allowed and they do go really fast and they can be dangerous. We also have a lot of birthdays here in May. Let me get out my slate of birthdays that are going on here. I think I see the vice mayor's name on here. I think I see the attorney's name on here too. So gentlemen, enjoy the best you can. And. Everybody be very safe. Keep everything in perspective. There's a lot of unknowns. And they're difficult times, but it's going to be okay. Thank you.
Freebold, I appreciate that. If I could go to. President Pro Tem Robert Shahu, please.
Thank you very much. We're. We're live. Well, we, we made history today.
Wait, wait, your microphone.
I'm sorry?
He's on. No, he's not.
I'm here now and I can't turn him on.
Hold on.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now?
No.
Yes. Mary's muted now.
There you are.
Okay. I told, I told my colleagues today, we are, we made history. And that's a good thing. It's nice to be part of a new beginning. And I think this is going to be, this is going to be come very familiar as we move forward. The, during the last council meeting till now. I've been able to get out and about more than I probably have in, in a while. And we're talking about all of the, the speeding up and down Westlake Drive. I see it. I live on Westlake Drive. Y'all know where I live. Pick up the phone, give me a call. My phone number is 561. We sent out a letter, a flyer to everybody. Hopefully you can see this. Every one of our email addresses is on this flyer. I received not one inquiry. But when I was out and about, I got stopped. And Bernadette said, why did it take you so long to get back to around the, the lake? Well, it's because you're talking to everybody. They want to stop. They want to ask you questions. And I think that's great. And the best traffic calming mechanism we have are. Our neighbors. They're walking in, they're walking all over everywhere in the bicyclists. But I tell you what, chief, you need to come park that speed trailer on Westlake Drive because I, I see it, we see it. And I think you need to start writing more tickets. Stop, this is, this is not right. You gotta, you gotta start beefing up on patrol. But it's kind of difficult to beef up control when you're, when you have limited resources. And I understand some of your officers are. Are not available for whatever reason. But. We have a citizens on patrol, chief. Maybe we can look into the feasibility of putting boats on patrol. Maybe we can put some special. Identification on these boats and see if we can get some volunteers to assist out there. And Chip Damsel, hopefully you're still listening to me. It's interesting. I sent two videos to Dan Clark over the weekend about the. The jet skiers around the back end of my property. And it's amazing. And I understand the, the boombox issue, but what are you going to do? They're there one minute and they're gone in a flash. Also, the complaints I've received have to do with the Keller Bridge timing. It seems as though. It's less than 10 seconds to get out of Lake Clark Shores and less than 20 seconds to come in. A lot of people want to make it longer both ways. So I want you to appreciate that, Dan. Maybe we can have some discussion on that and put it on the agenda. Social media, it was mentioned, I think by, I think by Albert. Yes, I've, I've been reading the social media and I'm a technical dweeb. I think everybody will agree with that. And I think last time I did a post on social media, I got it backwards. And I reached out to Mike Wade to help me. If you remember that, Val? Look, folks. They're not burying FPNL lines. They're not burying them. They're not putting in sewers at, don't know the cost. They're measuring for, they're doing some survey out there because we're going to have to replace that bridge on Pine Tree. That's, Dan, a half a million dollar project? How million? Folks. Pick up the phone and call us. Paul put a, a post out there. Paul, how many people did call you?
None.
You know, there, there's an old Lebanese saying, the dogs will stop barking when the gypsies leave the village. Folks, call us. We have the answers. And if we don't have the answers, we'll point you in the right direction to the right resource. That will give you the answers that you need. Stop this. Stirring the pot doesn't make it better. It just adds more confusion. We have the best staff there ever is. And when we were going through the practice sessions to become efficient at this. I noticed the staff was working hand in hand and I brought it to, to Dan's attention. Where each one will reach out to the other to help them. And I thought that that was, the camaraderie was, is contagious around here. And Mr. Clark, thank you so very, very much for all that you did. Emily, you did a great job in teaching me how to do this. Hopefully I did not. I did. I didn't screw it up too bad. I'm kind of excited. We went from 68, maybe 69 attendees. Minus the staff, so we're right at about 55, 56 attendees. And I think that's great. We'd love to hear from all of you. Pick up the phone and call us. 762-1969. Send me an email. Send me an email and I'll respond as quickly as possible.
Thank you so much, President Pro Tem Bob Shahu. Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure.
The, that's a.
Back one. There you are.
I'm okay. Chief, the other complaint that I have is people are not respecting the stop signs. And they just go right through them. I guess it's called a California stopper, California roll. I didn't have a chance to bring it to your attention before the meeting, so I made myself a note. Thank you for all you do, chief. I appreciate you coming in. And again, staff, thank you so very much for making us look as good as I think we do look. Thanks, Mayor, for the, what'd you do? Two virtual, you did two Facebook postings? So I appreciate that. Y'all are good at that. Me, I just, I just, I appreciate that. I get jealous sometimes. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Be safe.
It's the younger generation.
Well, thank you, everybody, for attending our meeting today, virtually. It's been great to see all this participation. There's a lot of everything that was already said, thanking the town and staff. Y'all done phenomenal job revisiting again. My personal desire for any member of our town to pick up the phone and reach out and talk to me. I did state that no one called me from that social media post and that is accurate. However, prior to that. And not related to those issues, I do receive phone calls and text messages and emails from residents. Who appear not to have any hesitation. They just reach out to me and, and we talk about whatever their issue is, which is great. And I appreciate that. I look forward to it whenever I have the opportunity. Mr. Mayor, did you see this Florida League of Cities, the city that talks, the book? Did you see this letter?
I did see the letter and I have the book, but I haven't read the book yet.
So usually I know the mayors do the readings to children and whatnot, but if you're. Willing to either do it with me or not, if you're not interested in doing it, I would like the opportunity to, to do this, Dan. So maybe we do it virtually or down the road. When we can congregate again, we can get, the, the book is for four to eight, children ages four to eight. Maybe we can hold a nice little reading session for the children in our community.
Maybe if the mayor would allow, we could do it virtually and post it on our YouTube channel.
I think that'd be great.
I think you're the perfect person to do it.
I'd love to do it. I've been reading books to Vivian lately, so I'm kind of getting into it.
Awesome.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
And happy birthday, Greg. It's a little bit later in the month, but I, your, your name's on this calendar too. Let's see here. That's all I have on my notes to talk about. Want to thank Senator Berman and Representative Silver's again for taking the time to be a part of our meeting and give the updates to everyone who was participating. Thank you all again for joining us. Look forward to seeing you around town. Don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. Take care.
Appreciate that. I just wanted to show you, this was the letter that went out to everybody. I want to thank Mr. Clark for working with Elliot Cohen to get this done. It was a lot of work, but we got the letter out. Information on the back. We wanted to reach out to everybody in a non-traditional or actually a traditional way via mail as opposed to just social media to make sure we were. Not missing people. Also, we did an annual state of the town report and it's here at town hall. And it's available online as well. And it's very well done and we appreciate that. We talked about the issues of improving infrastructure. Holding the line. Building community. Improving communications. As you know, our barbecue has been postponed now indefinitely until we have a new time. We're not sure when. What's hard to believe is that on March 10th, when we met in here. The topic of conversation was a parcel of land at the end of our road and it was. A big topic of conversation. We had a lot of people here and I was so glad to see people participating. Little did we know within the next five days, the world would be turned around. And we would be a completely different world and we would have people dying left and right. And our priorities would be different. And, you know, it kind of scared me as being the mayor here and a father of five children, wondering what do I tell my children? One of them was unemployed immediately in the restaurant business. You wonder about yourself as a lawyer, Bob's a lawyer, Paul's lawyers, we all have our own businesses in here. Are you going to be working? You're wondering if you're going to be living the next day. You're wondering whether, you know, you're going to be able to provide for your family. You're wondering about all the older people who are passing away. It's, it's. A lot of reflection, I think, that people have had over the past 60 days. We started to see things we've never seen before. We started to think differently. As a town and as individuals and as family members. I miss all of you here a lot. We just can't go over to each other's house and hug each other anymore or do anything fun. But we will at some point. I miss a lot of conveniences, but I want to thank Lord that everybody in our town that we know of is healthy. They're all doing well. We don't have an outbreak in our town. We. We're holding the line. We're, we're, we're encouraging people to not worry. That's what we want to do as your council members, your elected officials. We're here to help you. Please, the reason we sent you that letter was to email us. I did get a few emails off of this. And there were some complaints and I get it. That's fine. We, we don't mind complaints as well as whatever. But we're here for you. We're a small town, but we are by. I'll tell you what, if you haven't learned. Something about Lake Clark Shores, I hope you have in the last 60 days. We are a tightly knit community. We have the most beautiful resources. We have the most beautiful birds. The birds chirp, sing, yell, do whatever all day long. We've got beautiful lake. We've got beautiful people walking around. I've seen people walking on the streets I've never seen before, walking. Jogging, riding bicycles. Talking to people, being generous, helping people out. You know, that's what life is about and that's what the community is about. So if I'd say anything, thank you for choosing me to be your mayor again. I find this to be a very tough time to be a mayor and Paul is vice mayor. You're going to have to step in a lot of places too, because this is not easy. But I think Paul and I, along with your elected council members here, can do this for you. We can represent you and we can help you and we can alleviate all the concerns you have as individuals and citizens. You know, if you don't believe in God, maybe it's time to start believing in God. And I, I just say that lightly. We started meeting off with a prayer. There's a reason for that. And, you know, we're very fortunate that we're not sick. We're also very fortunate that we have a town manager like Dan Clark, who has pulled this together, has figured out what to do to keep us running. How to have a meeting going here, how to keep our officers employed on the street, how to keep our employees at home or here in town hall. How not to cut essential services to our residents, to do everything we can to just keep, keep it together. And I, I just say that as a representative of our entire town. Thank you, Dan Clark. Thank you, Chief Smith. Thank you, Charlie Scheck, for answering every legal question we have. I mean, we are an uncharted territory. This is something that will, in our lifetimes, will never happen again. And I don't think it's happened in most people's lifetime. So I kind of want to end with that and I kind of want to end with this too. Don't forget. This is very important. This is, and they're very hard to use when you're in a council meeting, as you can tell, but this is a very important. Thing to wear. And I want to encourage everyone to wear a mask when they go out to publics, to anywhere you go, coming with groups of people, wear it. Please listen to the health officials and what they have to say. So with that being said, this is the end, I think, of the very first and not the last Lake Clark Shores. Virtual Town Council Meeting. May 12th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That motion from Paul Shahu and seconded by Bob Shahu. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you so much. Thank you for tuning in and viewing. We appreciate it. We'll see you next time. Thank you so much. Thank you for tuning in and viewing. We appreciate it. We'll see you next time.